This is Andrea French, Executive Director for TAG Transportation Advocacy Group. And welcome to Home Side Chat. Today, we are joined by Houston City Council Member for District K and Vice Mayor Pro Tem Martha Castex Tatum. Welcome.
Hello Andrea, how are you?
Great, great, better and see that lovely smile.
I'm always trying to share a smile.
Yeah, so I know city council today and days are just moving, weeks are moving by. Tell me what your average day now looks like.
Well, before COVID-19, the days were not average. So of course, while we are experiencing this pandemic, the days are different every day. You know, we wake up every day looking for an opportunity to best serve our residents, the Houstonians. Of course, we still have responsibilities as council members to do the weekly work that we do at our council meetings on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. In addition, we are trying to meet the needs of Houstonians specifically. I'm trying to meet the needs of residents in District K as we combat this virus that seems to have just kind of come out of nowhere. But we have to just pivot and handle it so that we can save lives. And in the same vein, you know, do what we can to protect our robust economy in Houston.
Right, yeah, no. And I think it's, you know, I've heard in some of these other conversations, it is a very much kind of plan in the moment and also try to have your eyes on the future. And that's super challenging, yeah.
Absolutely. It's changing so rapidly. I noticed that one of the most important things that I'm doing now is trying to make sure I give residents up to date information. As soon as I send out a newsletter or a weekly update, there's a press conference and information changes. So it is a constant changing and moving of information. And I think that one of the most important things that we can do as elected officials is provide people with up to date, current factual information. And then they can make good decisions for themselves and their families.
Right, I think that's, that's true. Information is so powerful, especially right now when we all feel so disconnected.
Absolutely.
It's not the same as a traditional disaster that we've had in the past with Harvey where we can kind of link arms and really be, you know, amongst each other and still feel connected at a time of a lot of challenges and crisis, so.
Absolutely, this is a different type of disaster. And I think cities will be different after we combat COVID-19 or we get a handle on COVID-19. Just like the city of Houston was different after Hurricane Harvey. I think we will be different after we combat COVID-19. I mean, think about the tremendous spike in the number of people that are working from home. Is that something that we can institute in the future? Should more people work at home? You know, I was driving in today and I thought, wow, this traffic flow is amazing. And you may remember some of the studies where Houstonians cited traffic as the most irritating thing they have to deal with while living in Houston. But if you think about what's happening during this pandemic, typically, there's supposed to be only essential workers going to work. But can we actually function as a city with more people working from home? I know specifically in my office, it has not been horrible. I would have never thought, you know, staff, why don't you all work from home? And let's continue to do the work of the district. But it has not been horrible. And the staff is working just as hard at home as they do here in the office. The, the, the big difference though, is the actual connectedness. One of the things that makes us so strong as a team in our office is that we build off of each other synergies. And we, we get together and we plan. But now with this technology, I think that this will definitely be a new pathway for a lot of businesses and maybe for some organizations even within the city of Houston. I do think cities will be different.
Right, no, I think we, the TAG Board actually just had a great conversation about that. Looking at what are some different policies that are going to come out of, you know, of this, of this crisis that are, that are going to be really helpful for us as we plan and look at kind of infrastructure planning and development and just our movements, right? So, and one of them was teleworking. And, you know, HGAC has talked about it for years, their Commute Solutions Program and all the initiatives that they put forward. And are we now able to actually see it at play at full scale in this moment? And is that something that we can take from this and say, are there some policies that we can offer? That provide kind of companies some resources to really make this part of their plan, you know, even beyond the current, the current, the current crisis?
Absolutely, and I think that there will be some good factual data that will come from this pandemic and from people actually working at home. It opens up the door for so many more options if we really embrace the opportunity to telework.
Yeah, no, that's great. That's very, very timely because we did, we just had a great discussion about that. One of the other things too that we've talked about is, you know, that the opportunity to give back, right, during all of this. And I know that you are very focused on service. And really, it's been, it's been very inspiring to see all of the council members embrace, kind of in their own way, the different charities and charitable organizations that are, that are serving the community. So I wanted to kind of ask you, what is your, what is your primary focus for kind of that component of the work that you do?
Absolutely. I will tell you what has been most inspiring to me and what has touched my heart the most was the first week that the order came out, the Stay, Stay Home Work Smart order came out. I came into the office and I pulled out our distribution list of seniors. And I started making some phone calls. And when I heard those seniors on the other end of the line saying, oh my goodness, council member, thanks for calling me. That means a lot that you would even call to check on me. It spoke to me in a, in a way that people want to know that they matter. And, and, and we should be in positions to do things for people so that they know that we are here for them and they can depend on us to be making decisions that are in their best interests. And that we are here to work alongside them. And then when there are tough situations like this pandemic, that we are here to make sure that their needs are being met. I have some seniors that we are purchasing groceries and delivering groceries because they aren't as mobile. We are connecting people with the Houston Food Bank. It blows my mind, the number of people that line up for our food bank distribution. But when you think about it, families typically, their, their children are eating lunch and breakfast at school. But now with schools being closed, they are eating breakfast, lunch, dinner, snacks, 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 snacks at home. So grocery bills are, you know, growing exponentially. I, I think about my, my own grocery bill. My son is in college and I haven't purchased $200 worth of groceries since he left for college three years ago. But over the last month, you know, that, that has been the norm. Just because we are at home, eating at home now. So that, we had to pivot, you know, we, we had to pivot. And there are some basic needs that need to be met. And people depend on us to make sure that we are providing those resources and so that their, their needs can be met. And I have seen Houstonians just rise to this occasion. I mean, I get phone calls from people in the community saying, you know, what can I do? I'm at home, I have some free time. Can I pick something up for some seniors? Please call me if you need my assistance. And, you know, and I've taken them up on that. I have some of my friends that are cooking meals and delivering them to seniors that cannot be out. I have friends and people in the community that are making masks for some of our seniors and even for the, the children in the community. And we are in American ingenuity at its finest. I remember when we first started making the cloth mask and elastic was hard to come by. I saw some residents that put a post on Facebook that said, I'm using my crib sheets, the elastic from my crib sheets. And then people started talking about their fitted sheets, there's elastic in the fitted sheets. And then someone else said, well, they were using the hair bands for the elastic in the mask. And since the CDC changed the, the recommendation, you see people more and more wearing the, the face coverings. So that we can try to, you know, get a handle on the community spread. I told one of my friends the other day, I think these face coverings are going to become one of the newest accessories. A new fashion accessory. And I will tell you, I have seen some really, really nice face coverings out there. And people are doing a wonderful job. And, and it means a lot to see people making, meeting the need, especially for our healthcare professionals and our first responders. When the N95 masks were hard to come by, or we were having a hard time getting masks, people started mass producing them. So that, that those coverings would be available to people. And it just shows how much people want to help. Even though times are tough and everyone's dealing with their own situations, if you can sew, I guarantee you have been on your sewing machine making face coverings for, if not just your family, your friends and your coworkers.
Right, yeah, we had some moms in our, in my neighborhood that were, that were making them, especially for the kids, right? Because they're kind of a smaller, smaller need. So, yeah, so, no, I appreciate all those stories of service. I think, you know, people are kind of, in the beginning, I felt we were all triaging a bit, right? In our own, our own lives. And I think a lot more people are now perhaps breathing and getting at more acclimated and do have the ability and the capacity to find ways to serve. And so, right, it's the ingenuity, it is, it is the American spirit, right? I mean, it is, it is at its best, truly.
It is, and I think what we've been at, at home for about a month now. And I know for me personally, it has been kind of up and down. Because sometimes I get anxious about it because I'm not at home every day, all day. And so I feel, you know, am I, am I being exposed to the virus? Am I taking all the precautions? I have elderly parents and then I also have a 22-year-old who I'm trying to make sure that he is maintaining social distancing and, and, and washing his hands because I don't want to infect my elderly parents who, you know, have underlying health conditions. And we want, we want to keep everyone safe. But I think as a city that I feel are grieving. You know, when I, when I got the message that we lost our first District K resident, that he passed away and his wife was in the hospital and his daughter was in the hospital, you know, you carry that burden every day because these are people that you represent. These are people that are very much like your family. And when we lose people in our community, we all grieve together. And I think that people are not only grieving from the people that have passed away, but we are grieving our everyday, daily lives. We are grieving our, our travel, so many things that we take for granted. We're grieving just going to the grocery store and not worrying about standing in line to get in, you know? And so, we have to be able to express that grief and also give ourselves grace to find joy during this time as well. There is space in our hearts to grieve, also be grateful and thankful that things are as well as they are. Because, you know, you, you hear it all the time, things can be tough, but they can always be worse and they can always be better.
Very true. One of the traditions that we've started with my kiddos is that we do kind of daily gratitudes, right? And, and yesterday was a tough day for everybody, you know, trying to do schoolwork at home and, you know, park and, you know, it's find the joy today. And we all kind of, okay, we can, we can find it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But there's always joy and gratitude to find.
Absolutely. And I think that one of the things I keep trying to tell myself and tell everyone else is, history has shown that we will get through this and we will recover. And Houstonians are resilient, we will recover from this. But I, I don't want us to be in such a rush and so anxious to get back to our, what we know to be normal daily lives that we lose sight of, yes, we can recover economically, but we can never bring back people that we may lose during this pandemic.
Right, I agree. And to your point about kind of this desire to rush back, I think it is that constant push and pull that we feel personally and professionally to want to get back, 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 right, to normal, what, what, what normal life. But, and right now, there's so much uncertainty, but there's, there's a lot of conflicting information about what, what that's going to look like. And so I don't know if you can share from kind of your vantage point as best as possible, this re, this opening back up for business. And I think it's making us uneasy, so.
And there's a lot of anxiety around getting us back to, you know, what we, what we know as, as our everyday lives. But I will share, we had a conversation with Dr. Purse in our last city council meeting last week. And one of the things that stood out to me that he said was, we have not reached our peak with the data and the testing with this disease, with this virus yet. And they anticipate the peak will come at the end of the month or maybe the first week in May. But what stood out to me and what was so profound when he said, the peak is not at the end of the ballgame. If anything, it is halftime. And so for me, that was a call to let people know, once we do enough testing and we realize we've reached our peak, we kind of have a handle of where the virus is in our, in our city and let's contain it. We don't stop and just open up the city again. We have to be very smart and strategic and look at the medical data. Where is the virus the most? Are we using all of our precautions to make sure we aren't spreading this virus and we're containing it as much as we can? I think that we're, we, we have to look at the medical data and then we have to do this in stages. I don't think that we just pick a date once we feel like we've done enough testing and that people are feeling better and our medical facility has open beds, that we say, okay, May 15th, everybody go back to normal. Because quite frankly, I, I think that would just kick us back into square one. And how devastating would that be if we had to, we opened the city and then we have to do another Stay Home Work Smart order and be even more stringent with who should be out? I think it would devastate the, the city. So we, we have to be smart, use medical data and do it in stages. And so I'm encouraging people to stay the course. What we are doing is working. Our greatest tool that we have is social distancing. Making sure we are washing our hands, wearing our face coverings when we are out getting those essentials. Get some exercise, you know, eat healthy, get some rest. But we have to stay the course. Because until we are confident that we have reached the peak, we don't want to continue to let this virus grow exponentially.
Agreed. And can you talk a little bit about how the balance of, you know, we hear kind of the, the federal piece of things and wanting to reopen, the state having a statement that's going to be made potentially at the end of the week. You've got counties, you've got cities, that's a lot of layers that overlap.
There, there are a lot of layers that overlap. But one thing that I tell people all the time, that what happens locally is so important. Because your, your local elective officials are the closest to you, the closest to your data, to the data specific to our region. And so it is going to be incumbent upon the local leaders to talk to our state leaders. So I know that the mayor will be in conversation with the, with the governor, who I anticipate will be in conversation with, you know, our senators and the president. But it is important that we tell our story. If we have not reached our peak, there is no way we can say we are ready to open up the city of Houston. I think it endanger, it endangers people's lives and not only their lives, but our livelihoods. The number of people that are out of work, if we open the city and then all of a sudden, we have to be on another, you know, 30, 60-day lockdown. Can you imagine the impact that that would have on the city? So we have to be strategic and do it in stages. I heard you have to open the valve just a little bit at, at a time. And I like that because it is, it is smart. Once we look at our numbers and see that we've reached our peak and now we are trending downward, then of course, we can start to lessen the, the order and not be as stringent with the number of people that are staying at home. I think that we still have a lot of testing to do. And then, and then there's the, the talk of the additional testing where we can take, take some blood work and see, have you had COVID-19? Are you susceptible to getting it again? So you should be safe to go back to work, you know? Is that test actually going to be reliable? So there's still a lot of uncertainty, a lot of unknowns with this virus, and it's changing every day. So I, I would hope that we wouldn't be so anxious to get back to what we know as our normal day-to-day life and that we risk going back to square one and having to start over with the, you know, stay home orders.
Yeah, agreed. So also kind of looking forward, I know the budget discussion is, is around the corner. And can you share, you know, how, just, I mean, how? How do you walk through those budget conversations?
So what we have started with our budget workshops, you know, each department is presenting their best case scenario. They're giving us two to three options. This is the, you know, bare necessities budget, this is what we would need. And we will have to compile all that information. I mean, with this pandemic is definitely going to make the decisions that we have to make as a city pertaining to our budget extremely difficult. Our two sources of income, sales tax and property tax will be affected. The tremendous joblessness that is in our, our city right now is something we can't, we can't take lightly. But one of the most important things that we do as a city government is to bring forth a, a balanced budget. And it's going to speak to our priorities, it has to speak to our priorities. And it's extremely difficult when the budget is comprised of majority personnel. I will tell you, we've had presentations from HFD, HPD, General Services. And each one of those departments thus far, their budgets are, you know, largely personnel. We had our city council presentation on yesterday, our budgets are 91% personnel. So you can streamline as much as you can, but at some point, the only thing you have left is personnel. And you have to have people to serve the constituents. So we, we have to look at our PFM report, we have to look at those recommendations. We have to look at some of, some of the things that we did during the recession. How can we think outside the box? What can we do differently? Just like we talked about a little bit earlier, maybe we can pivot and do some things differently in the city. But it's going to take a concentrated effort from everyone rowing in the same direction. Knowing what our priorities are, what needs have to be met. And sometimes we will have to, you know, do more with less. That's not uncommon for us as, as a city. We, we have had to do more with less. But there comes a, a point where you just have to make those, those tough decisions.
Right, yeah, no. And I think too, as we think about trying to look at those job numbers, which are, you know, within the, within city, without, with, you know, outside of cities, all across all sectors, the numbers are, you know, they're staggering, the unemployment rate. And one of the things that, you know, with TAG and kind of representing that infrastructure industry, looking at is, you know, kind of what are the things, what are the job stimulators that are going to be coming out of this? As we, as we, as we start to walk towards whatever the other side of this looks like, what are some of the, the industries that are going to help stimulate jobs? And we know that construction's still going on.
Absolutely.
And, you know, is that, is it a good time to, to invest in infrastructure? You know, continue with the, continue investment, look for ways to invest in it more because in turn, that creates a lot of jobs. You know, it's also been mentioned that a lot of the jobs that have been lost are not jobs that are coming back relatively soon, right?
And so I, I agree with that. I think that this is definitely a time where people need to look at, what, what do I have to offer? And do I need to get some additional training? I mean, think about how our technology has changed, just even in my role as Vice Mayor Pro Tem on, on city council. I mean, we've been given additional tools so that we can meet via teleconferencing and teleworking. So there are, you know, additional speakers so that we can have a good Zoom conference. So I think things will be different and we have to be able to shift with this change that's going to happen after this pandemic. I do think people are looking forward to going back to our restaurants and hotels and travel. That's a part of life. And for the most part, I think those industries will come back. Unfortunately, businesses go out of business every year. And there are some that will not come back. But I do think that, you know, history has shown us that as, as an economy, we, we will bounce back. If we are smart and we open our city back in stages and we do it well, I think you'll see businesses picking up and people going back to their, you know, going out to eat for dinner, you know, one or two times in the evening. Going back to the, to the mall to buy some new clothes because maybe we ate too much during the stay-home work. And, and now we, now we need some new clothes. Or maybe we lost weight because we had more time to work out and exercise. So we got to pick up a few things. So I do think that we will get back to some of those, those necessities that we, that we, we go out to eat and we, and we get back to our retail and, and we start to do a little more travel. When we start to feel comfortable that procedures are in place so that people can be safe from this virus.
Right, right, yeah. And I think too, TAG is looking at, you know, the federal, all the federal relief packages that have come through and some of the stimulus. And there's been a lot of discussion around, around infrastructure, right? Because it's a job simulator. And one of the things that we are now want to pivot and focus on is, how do we, how do we illustrate well that Houston, Houston is the place where we will, we will put people back to work? Because we have, we have all the sectors, we have robust, you know, industries. And so, you know, this is the place to, we want to invest in Houston because we will be, we will be one of the hubs for job creation.
We are such a, a global city and we do so much globally. And, and our aviation, our, our airports, I think will, will play a big part in making sure that our businesses get back moving, moving in the right direction. So I think that you'll see some, some additional policies that encourage people to, to come to Houston. I know that Houston First has some new promotions that they will be pushing out soon to visit Houston virtually. And then also encourage, I know they will be encouraging people to come to Houston once we start slowly opening this, the city again. So we, we, we are in a great position as a city because we have such a robust economy. I think that we're extremely fortunate. And, and that's another reason why I think it's important that we really, really stay the course and. the course and save lives because we will bounce back in the city of Houston. We always have. We definitely will continue to work with our federal partners to try to bring as many resources to the city of Houston that we can to help with, for instance, rent payments. We talked about this in the mayor's report today, that we're, we're looking for some flexibility with the money that we do receive from the federal government so we can help to subsidize some rent payments to help prevent people from being evicted from their apartment. So there are a lot of options on the table. It's, it's still a, a moving target. But anything that we can do to partner with, you know, our, our federal government to make it better for the residents in the city of Houston, we are definitely going to do it.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I, I think one of the other things I like to ask during these interviews is, we've all learned a lot about ourselves individually, you know, amidst all of, all the crisis and the challenges, we may have thought that we reached our, our limits, but we found very quickly that we are capable of so much more.
Absolutely.
And so I, I was just kind of curious if you have learned anything different about maybe yourself or, or maybe, maybe colleagues or, or anything like that that's been surprising to you?
One, one of the things that I, I was thinking about last night, I watched Oprah Winfrey had a, a show on last night and she was specifically talking about the impact of this virus on the African-American community. And I watched that show and at the very end of the show after, she talked about why, some of the reasons that this is affecting the African-American community at such a higher rate. She had Jennifer Hudson on and Jennifer Hudson, who's a phenomenal vocalist, she sang one of her songs and it was called "Moan." And the song was so soul-stirring for me. I realized how powerful music is to comfort and to provide just the kind of relief that we need to just kind of exhale and know that it's going to be okay. I've always loved music, but I've noticed that because I've had a little chance to kind of pause and actually listen and feel the music over these last couple of weeks, how powerful it is and, and I enjoy it and, and I need it to just kind of undergird my strength to keep leading, keep looking for opportunities to serve others and really using this time to restore people's faith in government so that they know we are here to work alongside you and to make the decisions that are, are best for all of us. We're all in this together, we will come out of this together. And I believe that if we continue to take care of each other, that we will definitely be stronger together and get through this.
That was Home Side Chats. I hope you enjoyed our program for today. This series would not be possible without the partnership of our mobility partners. We thank you for your membership and your sponsorship and your support. Stay tuned for more episodes of Home Side Chat.